Um, Maureen Garrett, please give the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Dear Lord, thank you for this day, as each day is truly a gift that you give to us, and we are ever so humbled by the opportunity that each new day and each new sunrise gives us. Please watch over the proceedings this evening as our elected officials deliberate over each of the items on the agenda and guide them as they consider these items in the best interest of all of our citizens. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mayor. I call this June 11, 2013, regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Brookhaven City Council to order. Please, there's no roll call on here. Call the roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, J. Max Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Williams, District 1.
Present.
Councilmember Jim Meyer, District 2.
Here.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District 3.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District 4.
Here.
All present.
Would you please stand for the pledge?
My pledge is allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to do the right of which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, opening remarks, I don't have much on to say. There are a lot of folks here, which is great. We love to see this many people here, and we encourage lots of public comment, and there will be time for public comment and for public hearing. And we're, um, we want to make sure everybody's heard, so if there's, we run out of time, we're going to probably extend some of the comment time, so just to let you know. We want to hear from everybody. Anybody else have any comments or remarks? All right. Okay, I need some oaths here. We swear in a couple, uh, we have some, we're just adding police officers, they're coming in like by the train load, by, for interviews, and we're just taking the best off the train and sending it on, so, um, uh, we've got two more to swear in tonight. That's Officer Sergeant Chad Latonis and Lieutenant Juan Brillion. Did I get that right?
Close enough on this end.
All right. Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Lieutenant Juan.
You solemnly swear or affirm.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the office of Lieutenant.
I will faithfully execute the office of Lieutenant.
Of the City of Brookhaven Police Department.
Of the City of Brookhaven Police Department.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of Georgia.
The Constitution of Georgia.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And regulations of the City of Brookhaven.
And regulations of the City of Brookhaven.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money.
Do this state.
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
Or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
I am not the holder of any office of trust.
I am not the holder of any office of trust.
Under the government of the United States.
Under the government of the United States.
Any other state.
Any other state.
Or any foreign state which I.
Or any foreign state which I.
By the laws of the State of Georgia.
By the laws of the State of Georgia.
And prohibited from holding.
And prohibited from holding.
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office.
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office.
According to the Constitution and laws of Georgia.
According to the Constitution and the laws of Georgia.
I will perform the duties of my office.
I will perform the duties of my office.
In the best interest of the City of Brookhaven.
In the best interest of the City of Brookhaven.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear.
Without fear.
Favor.
Favor.
Affection.
Affection.
Reward.
Reward.
Or expectation thereof.
Or expectation thereof.
I do solemnly swear to never betray my badge.
I do solemnly swear to never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
That I will not be influenced in any matter.
That I will not be influenced in any matter.
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
And others accountable for our actions.
And others accountable for our actions.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. How about a hand for you, please? All right. See, well, thank you very much. You have any comments you want to make? Anything you want to say?
We're just going to give you the best we've got. Everybody coming is the best. I think they're all top-notch. I'm not going to speak for myself, but everybody that I've just met, the relationships here developed, morale is high. It's going to be jam up.
Thank you, bro.
Nothing worse.
Jam up, all I can. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Agenda announcements. I want to announce public hearings on the budget. Is that right? All right, for June 17th, uh, what, what time is that, the June 17th one?
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM? June 20th in the morning at what time in the morning?
Uh, 10:30.
10:30? And then June 20th in the evening at 6:30?
Correct.
Okay. So, we're having our mid-year budget adjustment, and we're having budget hearings, is that right?
Uh, no, sir. Actually, you're a little ahead of yourself.
Okay, okay.
Um, you're having, um, public hearings to consider setting the mileage rate.
Okay.
And then on July the 8th, you will, um, make a determination of the mileage rate, and then August the 10th, we'll come back for a mid-year budget adjustment.
All right, so the 17th and the 20th are hearings about the mileage rate and the budget in general, and then July 8th, we will be setting our mileage rate for the City of Brookhaven, and then in August, we'll have the mid-year budget adjustment hearings. Just repeating what she just said, but there we go. Any other announcements? Anybody have anything to say?
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, I'd, I'd just like to remind the citizens, there is an effort at Ashford Park Elementary. Uh, they're moving forward with, um, submitting a charter petition to make Ashford Park Elementary a charter school. Uh, um, it's already a fantastic school, they're just trying to make it better, and I think that as much public input in that process as we can get, uh, the better the results of that charter petition will be. Their meeting, their next meeting is at the Marriott in Century Center, uh, this coming Thursday at 7:00 PM, in one of their meeting rooms, so. And then they're meeting every Thursday for the rest of the summer to be able to meet an August 15th deadline for submitting the charter petition.
So, yes, that's a, so if any of the other folks that live in other schooled, you know, school areas, for like Montgomery or Troskies, they're welcome to attend as well to kind of learn what's, what's going on with y'all.
Yeah, I, I believe that, you know, there's, the State of Georgia has pretty active charter, charter movement going, and the idea is to really, to give public schools the flexibility to meet the needs of the students. So, I think it is initiative that I'd love to see, um, expanded within all the schools who are in Brookhaven.
All right. Thank you, Bates. Anything else? Rebecca, Jim?
Actually.
Oh, Rebecca.
I have just one little, uh, it's, it's actually a big shout-out to a District 1 resident, Miller Choate, who just gave a $100,000 challenge grant to the local No Kill Shelter, uh, actually in memory of his, uh, his, uh, deceased Weimer Ramer. Uh, for all of us dog lovers, I think that's just great news. Uh, as I went door-to-door, I know that, uh, people in Brookhaven love their dogs, and, uh, I think appreciate this kind of effort. We all know our county is struggling with its animal services, and even though they're making progress, um, this kind of effort is, uh, just great news.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cho, for that. Your dogs, thank you, too. Um, anything else? Okay, um, public comment section. We have, if you've got public comment, just give your forms to the nice young lady Dana here, uh, and we'll, you have three minutes. Come on up, anybody? Public comment. Kathy Forbes.
Do you want to?
Oh, look, before you speak, Kathy, um, we're going to have our city attorney tell everybody about public comment and public hearing and all that.
All right. Tonight, we do have a public hearing, and it's on a, it's on a zoning matters. Uh, and you certainly are entitled to speak for your three minutes here on that, but the, but the council really is not entitled to take those, the comments that you would make here at the first opening piece as part of their decision-making process. The public hearing is part of the Zoning Procedures Act, and that's how they're supposed to take the public input from it. Uh, I think the council has already announced that if there's a desire to extend the period, during the period where they can take comment and, and go forward, that they're willing to do it at that point in time. I just wouldn't want you to feel that, uh, you're making your statements here as part of the process that they would, they could consider in making their determination.
Thank you, Dave.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Come on up.
Thank you. Okay, well, I am here to speak about the text amendment. Kathy Forbes, Brookhaven Heights, Peachtree. Okay, then Peachtree Community Association, resident of Brookhaven Heights.
Kathy, can you get, there you go. Thank you.
Yes, okay. The LCI overlay represents the only real planning vision that Brookhaven has for itself at this time. It's the vehicle by which we can truly become the most desirable live-work-play community in Atlanta, the jewel of the southeast, as, as you have said. It has broad community support because it represents the community's hopes and dreams for what Brookhaven can become. To that end, the underlying original intent of the overlay should be preserved and, if anything, strengthened to best support the vision. The primary reason for creating a text amendment to the overlay was to do just that, to create more clarity and to strengthen the overlay, not to create ambiguity or to water down the overlay in any way. This was not an easy task, given the vagaries of language. I think we are close, but we're definitely not there. Of primary concern to the BPCA is the language surrounding the second-story requirement. The second-story requirement is central to the vision of the overlay. It is what enables the specific development form intended by the overlay. Basically, it is what creates the look and feel of Brookhaven Village on Dresden Road, which has proven to be very appealing to our community. As soon as you state that the second story must consist of no less than 75% of the square footage of the first floor, less than except outdoor assembly area, you encourage zoning attorneys that they can reasonably ask for reductions. Therefore, we must not introduce the option of 75%. The LCI requires a two-story minimum. The second story must be 100% of the square footage of the first floor. We can come up with language that allows for design elements, such as an outdoor patio, without inviting debate. We want to provide zoning attorneys with clear guidelines that allow them to advise their client on what can and cannot be accomplished. Secondly, the language itself is up for interpretation. It should be our goal to introduce language that leads, that, that needs little or no interpretation by the ZBA. I know you're checking that clock there.
I didn't want it to ding on you without you having a warning.
For example, the phrase "less than except outdoor assembly area" has already generated questions from people who wonder exactly what that means and how that phrase will be interpreted down the road. Maybe, you know, you guys know, "less than except outdoor assembly area," very confusing. Any modifications to the language of the overlay that could promote misinterpretation or promote development that negates the intent of the overlay should absolutely be avoided. So, the BPCA recommends that prior to approval of the amendment, there be one or more work sessions between knowledgeable citizens and city planning representatives to work through the specific language that will best support the intent of the LCI, of the LCI vision. Most importantly, given the fact that the second-story requirement is central to the intent of the overlay, we strongly recommend that the requirement of a two-story minimum not even be subject to a variance request before the ZBA. There are several aspects of the zoning code that are not subject to variance, such as building height and permitted uses. We need to add the second-story requirement to this list. This is too important to not get exactly right. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate it. All right, next.
Kevin Fitzpatrick.
Thanks. I, I feel a little like the kid who didn't talk, you know, he's four, five, six, seven years old, he never said a word, and then one day, he's eating dinner at the table, his knife slips, a steak falls off the plate onto the floor, and the kid says, "Oh, damn." And the parents are amazed, they said, "Oh, my God, you haven't spoken, you haven't said a word up until now." And he said, "Well, up until now, everything's been okay." I'm Kevin Fitzpatrick, I live on Triple Creek Court, right across from the Kittredge Magnet School with my wife Patty, my daughters Maureen and Erin, and a little miniature wired-haired dachshund named Daisy. Daisy weighs about seven pounds, she's a member of our family. You can call Daisy a, a Doberman Pinscher if you want to, but she will still be seven pounds. You can call that text amendment as supporting the overlay if you want to, but it guts the overlay. It guts the second-floor requirement. It says "less than accepting." I'm a lawyer, the way I read that, "less than accepting, uh, an outdoor patio," you can have an outdoor patio of 100% of the square footage of the first floor, and, and that would comply with the way that language is written. This, this, um, overlay is a baby. This overlay came in in 2007. In city planning terms, it is an infant. It is the best hope that we have to change an area of our city that is the, the stretch of Peachtree Road that is, that gives us the most opportunity for improvement. I urge you not to smother the infant in the crib, which is what the text amendment does. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Hold on, now, hold on, hold on. We don't, we want to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak, but one of the rules is we can't be hollering or applauding anybody. If we can just please maintain the quorum, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Jim, you have a comment?
I'm just going to say to reiterate what the, what the city attorney said, any comments that are, that are said during this section of the meeting can't be taken into consideration with respect to the overlay. So, you're welcome to come speak, but this, there will be a public hearing at a later time in the meeting where comments made during that period can be considered by council with respect to the overlay, so, just so that, you know, just so you know, and I, I understand we've had a couple of comments, but, um, I just wanted to clarify that, that technically what Kathy and, and Kevin said, uh, that can't be considered going forward. So, just, uh, the rest of the comments, you're welcome to come up, but there will be a public hearing section where we will, uh, take comments with respect to the overlay changes.
And it's not that we don't want to consider it, or wouldn't love to hear more of it, just the rules, so it has nothing to do with our personal opinion on what you said or what we want to hear.
Yeah, we're not, we're not trying to quarrel comments, and we'll give you enough time then, but we just want to make sure that you understand that, that we are bound by certain rules, uh, beheaded down by the State of Georgia with respect to zoning code.
And they seem strange sometimes, so just bear with us on, on what we have to follow. Thank you. Next. No more? Well, somebody's.
Here we go.
Okay, I'll speak two separate times. I'm Eddie Eulard, I've lived in Brookhaven since 1977, and, uh, I'm somewhat dubious as to why 2013-0501 is necessary. I can't for the life of me understand why we would want to reduce the amount of time for public input on dealing with the issues that are necessary to grow and make our city function properly, and I realize that, should that pass, that these meetings would be a lot shorter because there would be fewer times when people would have reason or option to speak and voice their opinion. So, I would, hopefully, request that the council would see fit to defer or vote down 20501.
Thank you. Um, more comment? Anybody else? You sure? Ronnie, there's Ronnie back there. Does Ronnie fill out a form?
I fill out a form.
Okay.
I can talk to Mayor.
Come on up. Come on up, Ronnie. Run, run, you got to get up here quick. You want to bring your signs with you? You're bringing signs every time you come?
That's for later on.
Okay.
Ronnie Mayer, community activist, y'all all know who I am. Remember, all the votes, you need to all go back to your constituents and talk to all your peeps. Remember, you're not voting for what you think. You're voting for your neighborhoods. And I know there's rules and there's laws and what the county attorney, city attorney says, and what Jim says, but we're all just homegrown folks here. And let's vote with your brains and, and the people who voted you in there, what they tell you they want. It's not what you want, what you want. Let's vote for what your constituents want. This thing we changed in the LCI, she's right. Whether it's right to talk about it now, or you want me to come back later, we'll come back later. And just think, what Eddie said, same thing. You know, he, he, you're voting on, just saying something that, that you're going to vote on it once, and it's done. And you, there's no room for everybody to, to talk about it, that's all. Just think about it. You're here because we voted you in here, and you need to talk to all your constituents. It's not what y'all think, it's what your constituents who voted you in here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Anybody else? We're sure? All right. I'm about to close the public comment. I don't have to bang the gavel for that, right? Uh, all right, the public comment section is closed. There'll be all the opportunity towards the end for public hearing. All right, um, consent agenda. Now, Maureen?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, you have four items on the consent agenda. The first two, um, relate to previous meetings and their minutes. Uh, the third item is the award of the financial software contract to Tyler Technologies. This is just an award of the contract, and the negotiation of the contract will be reviewed and determined through the city attorney's office for conformity, and then it will then go to the mayor for signature. The fourth item is the, um, listing of city holidays and, and the closing of City Hall for those.
All right, is there a motion?
Ms. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Just to, just want to provide a little bit of clarity to the, um, to the instructions given to, to the city on the financial software contract award, and that we're going to look at, you know, the, the ability to purchase software as a service and, and rather than outright licensing purchases, and, uh, and the city staff's been instructed to affect the most economical means of delivering that contract award as possible.
Thank you. Any more comments?
What, does this get posted to the, to the website? The fact that this has been awarded?
Yes.
Yeah.
When does that happen?
Well, um, upon the approval of the consent agenda, which is, is the item of, and then that will be posted, and then the contract will be reviewed by the city attorney, and then in addition to what Councilman Madison just may mention of, we'll make sure of that, and then it will proceed to the mayor for city, uh, for approval.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk, please, in her minutes, that this consent agenda has passed. Announcements? Do we have any announcements? No? All right. There are reports and presentations? No reports and presentations? Old business? Okay. Maureen, Bill, one of the two?
Mayor and council, an under old business. Number one is ordinance 2013-0501, an ordinance that the charter of the City of Brookhaven, Georgia shall be amended so as, so that upon proper passage, section 2-15 ordinance form procedures shall be revised. This is a second adoption, second read of a home rule charter change.
Yes.
I believe that during the work session, you all made it, decided you may want to defer this for one more time, and so if you want to make a motion to defer to the next regularly scheduled meeting?
I will move to defer ordinance number 2013-0501. An ordinance that the chapter of City of Brookhaven, Georgia shall be amended so that upon proper passage, section, section, sec-215 ordinance form procedures shall be revised.
Second. Any discussion? Yes, there's going to be some discussion.
Yeah. I just, I just want to reiterate what we said in, uh, the work session, that's that we've directed staff to, uh, provide a policy for how this, uh, ordinance will be used. There are certain situations, we talked about spreading out our votes so that there will be time and, and opportunity for sufficient public hearing. While we are looking at a one-read, uh, which eventually, majority of items will be, we still want to have an opportunity to, to open certain items up for, for public comment, public notice, public announcement, so that, that we're not rushing through to make a decision based on one-read, as, as this ordinance suggested. So, the deferral tonight is, is to allow staff time to, uh, to prepare that policy for us to review it and to come back, I'm sorry.
And process.
And process, excuse me, policies and process, and come back at a later date and approve it once those things are in place, so that we're comfortable that we have something that, that will allow us to, to air ordinances and, and important matters sufficiently before we vote on them.
Yeah, the purpose, what this ordinance will allow us to do is to be efficient where we need to be, but it actually will end up getting more, uh, we're getting more public comment and give us more time to process that comment by having, um, the action taken on any first reads at a subsequent meeting. So, Maureen, if you want to just briefly address that one more time, just to clarify exactly what?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, what, um, what was discussed in, in the work session was a means in which to keep the community engaged, uh, so that there could be opportunity to hear from the public and ample opportunity for the council to take, um, matters that are presented to you as a, a body, um, under advisement and consideration. So, uh, what we are, um, working towards is to, um, continue with the pattern that we now have, is that any item that is going to be placed on a future council agenda is always heard and discussed and presented in a work session. Following that, um, the item will be placed on the, um, city council agenda, and staff, whichever appropriate department is shepherding that, uh, ordinance, will make a presentation. The council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the staff back and forth, and to hear from the public. Uh, and then, taking that comment and from the public, the mayor and council will have the opportunity then to, um, direct questions specifically to that department, to the city attorney, to myself as the manager, um, to further clarify and understand what was presented, and, and to be able to answer, uh, questions from the public or to provide more information. At that point, the council can determine, um, you know, if they wish to proceed or if they wish to take the matter under advisement and then place it on a future agenda at a minimum of two weeks' wait, which would be the next council meeting. And then that is, that is the policy, as I understand it, and then the process that I will describe for you all to review.
All right. So, this is not, this is not an amendment or an ordinance that seeks to squelch public opportunity to comment or know about legislation in any way, shape, or form of fashion?
No, absolutely not. No, it really provides more opportunity to engage the public.
Thank you.
I just want to reiterate that, that point, in that this proposed change in policy does allow much more interactive communication about the proposed ordinances in work sessions, um, but also allows the city greater, um, efficiency when, when we get to ordinances that are not controversial, that, that people do want to see passed sooner rather than later. Um, so, uh, the purpose of, of postponing it tonight is that the message, your message, the public's message to us, who is certainly heard, that, uh, we want to allow the city, uh, the chance to be able to communicate the intent of this ordinance a little bit better to the residents.
If I may, um, just to also add a point, too, um, as we discussed this evening, and that is, this, um, recommended process, uh, does improve the communications even more because, as you recall, your first read of an ordinance, you were silent, you could not engage the public, you couldn't comment to the public, and if you'll recall, you know, those items are, this is the first read, requires no action. So, um, it did restrict your opportunity to even engage with the staff as to, "Give me more information, clarification here." So, it, it truly does, um, offer more opportunity for the public to have a voice and for you to respond to them.
Thank you very much. All right, um, all, is, the motion, has already been motion made on this to defer?
Yes, I have one comment, if you'll mind.
Okay, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, just real quick. It seems, uh, my perception is that when, uh, we get, um, comments or indoor complaints, it's because there's not a full understanding of really what's going on.
So, it did restrict your opportunity to even engage with the staff as to, give me more information, clarification here, so it, it truly does offer more opportunity for the public to have a voice and for you to respond to them.
Thank you very much. All right, um, all, is the motion, has already been motion made on this, to defer?
Yes, I have one comment, if you don't mind.
Okay, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, just real quick. It seems, my perception is that when we get comments or indoor complaints, it's because there's not a full understanding of really what's going on. It was inferred that, it was already mentioned that this one read was an attempt potentially council's part to just try to ramrod things through, which is totally not the case at all. I initially was not in favor of this. I thought the two read was a protectionary period for us, so that we weren't overreacting or acting hastily in the beginning. But clarification from Bill certainly is that instead of being called to arms or announcement to the public about the first read, that something's about to happen, we're now doing it through the debate process, posting it. So nothing really has changed. It's still gonna go through two weeks, and in work session, what council decided, what we, we talked about, is that we're gonna be very, very diligent to make sure that if it comes anywhere and they're not, not being understood to the full intent, we will defer on, so to make sure that we don't get caught into it in a bind. I, I do want to make that clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor of deferring the ordinance, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk please intermitent minutes, this has been deferred, okay? Number two is the approval of the amended land use process and meeting calendar?
Uh, yes, mayor and council, this is a reconfirmation of a revised calendar for submittal to Planning Commission for rezoning cases or other site plans or other matters that come under their purview, purview for review, and it does anticipate the one read ordinance that we've just described, so it is an adjustment to that. And it's just merely identifying which council hearing date the item will travel to.
All right, and is there a motion on the floor?
I move, I move we defer the approval of the amended land use process and meeting calendar, excuse me, until such time that the one read ordinance is, is approved?
Is there a second?
I agree.
You second?
I second.
Any discussion? Any comment from staff on that?
We serve at the pleasure of the mayor and council.
Well, I want to know what's your, what's your opinion on deferring that to the?
I think that, um...
I want your advice on that as well, ma'am.
My advice, my advice would be that we heard the policy that the mayor and council discussed in the work session, and we're developing a process, which has just been sounded into the record regarding that. We would like to give some predictability to the applicants that are filing applications, and they need to have some certainty. Many of those applications are predicated on financing and performance, especially where properties are under contract, and the seller does require performance, and there could be earnest money at stake that could go hard, depending on failure to perform. And I, I would encourage you just to reconsider that, but if you feel that another two weeks will give you more time to take this under advisement, then we're prepared to bring it back to your next agenda. That would be June the 17th, because you have canceled the June 25th hearing, and we are having, as you know, a public hearing on the setting of the mileage rate, and we will have a special call meeting that evening as well, because there's a couple other matters that we need to bring forth for your consideration, so we'll just place that on the agenda for the 17th.
So is this, in your opinion, deferring this, does it help, or is it, you're saying that the way it could hurt possibly is, give people a chance to plan? If they don't have the calendar, if they don't have, if they don't pass the calendar tonight, then they won't be able, will have to wait another week or so?
If we don't pass, if we don't pass the calendar tonight, then it defaults to the calendar that was originally approved that has two readings.
Oh.
And remember, your first reading was of no action. Maybe Susan could comment on that more, I don't have a...
That is correct. We do have some items that we have had to send through the system for public hearing advertisement.
Okay.
In relation to this particular calendar, with the policy that we're, we're looking at, I don't think that if you, if you do determine to do otherwise, I, I think that this calendar would not fly in the face of what you select to do. It's just that the identified public hearing date would be the identified public hearing date on the calendar.
Okay. So my sense is, correct me if I'm wrong, is that staff would prefer that we go ahead and pass this calendar, but it's not a big, huge issue?
Correct. We would prefer it, but we can work around another two weeks.
All right, any more discussion or questions?
Uh, just, just to make sure I get clarification that, that the only intended, or the only consequence of deferral to our next meeting on the approval of this is that over the next two weeks, we would not be able to give an accurate set of dates for hearings, or what, maybe explain to me, what, what is the ultimate consequence of delaying?
Right, well, the, the calendar sets forth for the public, not only the applicants, but also the general public, so they can ready themselves to be engaged and present at a planning commission meeting. It gives you the deadline date for which to file your application, it shows the date that you'll go to the city, the planning commission, and then the date for which you'll, that case will travel to the city council, so...
But can you, can you identify any kind of direct consequent, negative consequence of deferring this for two weeks, just to...
No, none, none at this point, other than to, to provide, you know, more predictability to the, to the public. If, if the concern of council, is I thought I heard the motion and understood it, is to delay this until you make a determination on the, the second read of the one read charter amendment, I don't know, I mean, you've, you've deferred that, and, I mean, we could, again, wait, we're talking about one week, we're talking about coming back on the 17th. I would prefer as much certainty to give to the public, because every day, people are coming to the planning department to seek applications. But, again, we can certainly inform the public that the calendar right now is not set...
Just a little more work for you.
Well, what we can do is we can just default to the current calendar that we could do.
Yes.
I believe, I believe actually that the city may be wanting to make some changes, and they may have already asked for those two dates in anticipation with the advertisement.
All right, do you want to go forward with your mo...
Let me ask one question. Currently, the two read system, when a case, a zoning case comes before the city council, we have both the first and second read, like we're doing tonight, as the second read of this particular zoning case. It almost seems like this is a pretty good argument for the one read, because we really didn't hear or discuss the case before.
All right.
They've already been to the planning commission, they've had public hearings. Okay.
Jim, do you want to, you stay with your motion? It's up to you.
I, I would draw it if...
I'm not asking you to, I just want to know what you want to do.
You know, at, at this point, it sounds like, although the, the next submittal date is, is not until after our meeting, if we meet on the 17th, the next submittal date is, is the, is the 3rd of July, so I'm not sure that, but, you know, I'm, I'm more than happy to withdraw it if that makes staff's life easier trying to clean up the calendar.
All right, so, you, all right, you want to make, you got, I can't do it for you, if you're, and I'm not telling you what to do, obviously.
I'll make, I'll make a substitute motion that we approve the amendment of the land use process and meeting calendar at this time.
Seconded.
Is that the right process? Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor of approval of the amended land use process and meeting calendar, signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? No, no opposed, right? Okay. Madam Clerk, please intermitent minutes, this calendar is passed. Okay, um, ordinance on the construction board of appeals, this is the second read?
Yes, mayor and council, this is ordinance 2013-0505, amendment to chapter seven, construction board of appeals. This is the ordinance wherein we are amending the, the appointment process to meet the charter and changing it from the process that it previously was in place with DeKalb County.
All right. Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll, I'll move that we pass ordinance 2013-05-05, amendment to chapter seven, construction board of appeals.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All in fa, discussion? All in favor of adoption of the ordinance, signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, madam clerk, please intermitent minutes, this is passed. These four, four and five, is there a motion on four and five?
Mayor and council, we'd ask that you just defer this, this is in a continuing process with county, and the intergovernmental agreements have not been finalized at this point in time.
Do we have a motion to say for, defer both four and five?
That'd be fine.
All right, great.
I would like, I'll make a motion to go ahead and defer for approval of intergovernmental agreement between DeKalb County, City of Brookhaven for Police Services, and for consideration approval intergovernmental agreement between DeKalb County and the City of Brookhaven for Parks and Recreation Services.
Seconded.
All right, discussion? Um, I'll have some discussion on this. We are, we, the city manager and I met last week with DeKalb County on these agreements. They've requested to come out to, to Brookhaven to discuss them further. We've been contacting the county a couple times this week, we haven't heard anything back yet, but we expect them to come back to finish the, you know, these, the negotiation of these agreements, and when that happens, we'll be happy to put an approval on the agenda next time, consideration. Um, any more discussion or questions about this? All right, all in favor of deferring items four and five, signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk, please intermitent minutes, these have been deferred. All right, now we're to public hearing. Need to open the public hearing? Is there a motion for that, or no?
You don't need that.
All right.
Next item is a public hearing for RZ 1302, a text amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding the Brookhaven Peachtree overlay.
Ms. Cannon will present that.
Thank you, mayor and council. As Mr. Riley indicated, this is RZ 1302, this is a text amendment to the Brookhaven Peachtree Overlay District. And just to give you a little bit of background, in March, the mayor and city council enacted a moratorium to, to review whether technical changes were necessary for appropriate implementation of the overlay district. And that particular moratorium was extended, or applied not to extend past midnight on June 25th. Following the enactment of the moratorium, the staff was given two charges. The first was to provide an interpretation over what the overlay language indicated relative to density, and whether or not additional changes should be considered in implementation of the overlay. In addition, the staff was directed to gather input from former DeKalb County personnel who had been involved in implementation of the overlay, to obtain input from overlay committee members who had been involved with inception of the overlay and had been involved in that process for many years, and to also gather input from the general public regarding concerns the general public may have. We actually did post a link on the website to gather community input. After having had all those meetings, and after having, acquiring all that input, the staff created a, assimilated a list, which we then provided to the council in a work session, and as a result of the work session, there were five or six items, five items that the staff was directed to address in a text amendment. The first was to create a method to measure height within the overlay district, and that particular aspect related to sort of a build-to-line aspect along the sidewalk and how to measure that, so we have included language in that for the overlay. The second was an amendment to the definition of story. In quite a few of the meetings that I held with different members of the public and input received, there were concerns over whether or not someone would try to build a fake story, there were concerns over someone trying to install a mezzanine in a building and not use the second story. So the request was to try to close the gap to ensure that the second story would in fact be a second story. So, the first thought that I had was that, well, it should be 100%, it should be 100% of the floor beneath. And then when I had meetings with our chief building official, talking about how you construct a second floor with a sloping roof and the framing that would occur, it, it was clear that if, if that type of architecture existed, that the second floor would not be able to be 100% equal to the bottom floor. We did not revise the text of the overlay to weaken the fact that two-story is required under section 27, 728, 15.2, F3. That is the section in the overlay that requires two-story, we did not touch that. The attempt in defining story was to tighten that it was for heated, occupable space, and the less than except language meant to not include second-story space that might be used for outdoor dining. So we didn't want that outdoor dining area or outdoor assembly area to be included in the calculation of the second story, so that's where that came from. In regard to parking requirements, the, the request was to take a look at the parking requirements for restaurants, because a lot of the comments that were received were that although this particular overlay did provide for pedestrian access, and it was an overall design guideline, that there was concerns that there was not enough parking allowed for restaurants, which was then causing overflow into neighborhoods. So, we did increase the requirements for restaurants to allow for, and I know it sounds strange, both the minimum and a maximum of one space for every 125 square feet of outdoor, of restaurant space, including outdoor seating area, so that if a restaurant expanded, that outdoor seating area would also be required to include that area in their parking requirement. So an example of that would be if you had a 5,000 square foot restaurant, the number of spaces that, spaces that you would be required to have would be 40. The reason for the minimum and the maximum is that that is in line with what the ordinance currently says for other commercial and retail uses, and it's in there for minimum purposes, but also maximum, so as not to create a sea of parking. The other additional requirement was to include provisions for sidewalk signs, that was actually a request from council to consider that in the overlay district, and we did include some language for that. I think you have 10 different bullet points in your package identifying what that would be, that they not be taller than three feet, that they're no larger than six square feet, that there's one allowed for establishment, that it has to be located in front of the actual tenant space area, that the signs have to be easel style or chalkboard style, made of, not plastic but wood, they can't be embellished with plastic or any lens or anything of that type nature. There are a few other points as well. And then the last item we were directed to do was to add clarification language in the text regarding density. First, I want to make it clear from a staff perspective, we are clear on what the ordinance says relative to density. We do believe that the underlying zoning, base density, base requirement, the underlying zoning, whether it's the zoning district or zoning condition, controls when it comes to residential density. So we did put some language that we felt clarified that, for those that may not be clear on that, in your actual package. We did add one more in there, we took the liberty of correcting a typo in, in the text, you'll see that's in your package. And we did take this forward to the planning commission during their June 5th public hearing. The planning commission recommended approval of this text as has been presented with the correction of one word in paragraph, part one, subparagraph two. The word "about" is in that particular paragraph, and that should be replaced with the word "above." And that was basically the planning commission recommendation, and I'll be glad to answer questions at the appropriate time.
I'd like to just make a comment, that I appreciate all the hard work you put into this. I know you put in a lot of time into this, and I just want to say, you're, when it comes to things like the stories, I've been looking at a lot of the emails that we've been getting from folks about what your interpretation, how to effectuate making sure that people have two stories in the overlay district. And your interpretation of that is just a different way of looking at it. And so some of the comments and some of the emails that I reviewed have been, you know, kind of rude, from, to be honest with you, and I, and I want to apologize for some of the comments, that, you know, the language about, it's stupid, makes no sense, that kind of thing, as if you were just making things up off the top of your head that, you know, would hurt the overlay. I know you're, what your intention is, and we're gonna find a way to get there, to make sure we protect the two-story requirement of overlay, and I appreciate the work that you've been doing on that. And I just want to let people know in the future, when you're sending an email to staff members about this type of thing, please don't use language like, this is stupid, it doesn't make sense, how foolish are you for doing this. They're doing their best, they're not doing anything malicious, they're very hardworking, very competent employees, and I appreciate what you're doing and the effort you put into this, because I know you've been working hard on it. So, I, I know you want to protect the overlay and protect the intended overlay, just like we do. You, you have a different way of thinking about it sometimes, we'll just have to come together and make sure that what we get has the effect of law, so I appreciate what you're, the work that you've been doing on this.
Well, thank you, mayor, I appreciate that. And it's not the intent to destroy the fabric of the district, it's to keep it intact and clarified. I don't take any offense to any comments that were made, we're all here to make an informed decision, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Susan, during this comment time, I, I personally saw a steady stream of people that, of you talking. How, how many people do you think you spoke with over the course of putting this together?
I couldn't begin to tell you. I, I know I gave you a package of about an inch thick, but I, probably at least 50, if not more. Thank you.
You, you mentioned that, that density, resonance of density is controlled by the underlying zoning, the, the overlay includes sort of a patchwork quilt of zoning of both single and multi-family zoning categories. What would the, what would the density, for instance, that, based on your interpretation, be for a property that's, that's got a single-family R100, R100? be for a property that's got a single-family, R100, R75 zoning classification at this time? What, how many, what sort of residential densities would be permitted on that track?
Well, the overlay is about three-quarters of a square mile and has over 400 acres in it. And within the overlay, the base zonings, there are about 17 different base zonings. So in looking at an underlying residential zoning that doesn't have density relation in the overlay, you would look at either the lot size for the single-family component or you would look at the density in the base zoning or the conditional zoning that may or may not be on the property.
And that would generate, I guess, you said both lot size and underlying density. Which would take precedent?
If it's single-family, it would be the lot size.
And if it's multifamily?
If it's multifamily, it would be the density.
So...
Because you have to look at all the factors. You have to look at the basic rule of the lot itself, the minimum lot size itself, and for multifamily, you would have to look at the density itself, but you also have to look at the parking, you have to look at the setbacks, you have to look at everything to see how you can lay the site plan out.
So you're saying the density could be upwards of 30, 40, 50, or is it going to be capped at the 12 or 15 that the RM zonings currently have?
Whatever the current cap is under the underlying zoning is what the cap would be.
And if it's a commercial property that has no residential permitted, what, how would the density be determined there?
For commercial or residential?
Commercial.
For commercial, you would look at the height allowed, setbacks, the lot coverage, the parking, and you would reach a saturation point that would then reveal for you what you could ultimately build on the property.
Susan, there's one line in the, in this first paragraph about the scope that just baffles me because it seems like your text amendment says just the opposite. The line says, wherever the underlying zoning regulations are in conflict with the provision of the overlay district, the regulations of the overlay district shall apply. And then your text amendment goes on to say, in fact, the zoning shall apply. I have a hard time figuring out...
Well, you have to look at whether there's a conflict or not. And if it's, if there's not a conflict, if there's not a conflict, then the base zoning applies.
That is, those two sentences there are some, I think, that we probably need to work on because, you know, as a lawyer, it's a little confusing, but I understand your intent is to convey that the underlying zoning controls if there is an absence or if there is a conflict, correct? Is that correct?
Let me read the lead incense to that, maybe that makes it a little bit clearer. It says, the current language says, wherever the underlying zoning regulations are in conflict with the provisions of the overlay district, in conflict with the overlay district, the regulations of this overlay district shall apply. Shall apply. That's what it currently says. Conflict means, this is what's been added, conflict means there are competing regulations or provisions. In the absence of a provision in the overlay district, for example, if there's not a provision for density for multifamily in the overlay district, the regulations of the underlying zoning shall apply. And that zoning term means base zoning or conditions of zoning.
When you say overlay in that preamble sentence, when you say overlay regulations, are you talking about overlay regulations or are you talking about the zoning regulations that are in the overlay?
Yes.
The zoning regulations that are in the overlay?
Yes.
Which one?
Okay.
I think what, it seems to me the conundrum here is that the overlay does not really specify density, spell out exact what is the density per area. It specifies height.
Correct.
Other kind of authorized uses. And so when it says, you know, you can have, it clearly says, we want to have mixed use, retail, multi-use, multifamily, and then now we're saying, no, it's really only controlled by whatever's on the ground there. That's what confuses me. So maybe you could explain, is the overlay not, not a zoning, is not a regulatory document? Is it just a policy document? And, I mean, I don't understand why the underlying zoning trumps the overlay. I would think they'd either be equal, or in this sentence, it says the overlay trumps it.
Typically, when you implement an overlay, you write an overlay so that it entices someone to want to develop in the overlay.
Right, which is what we want to happen.
And the underlying zoning is kept intact so that property rights are not taken.
So you don't have a taking?
You don't have a taking. You add an overlay so that you do not take property rights from what's underneath. When you write an overlay, you want it to be so, written so well that it would entice someone to want to develop in that fashion. This particular overlay references the comprehensive plan. Instead of going to create the regulatory tool that may have been needed to put in that overlay district, it referenced the comprehensive plan, which is a policy guide. So zoning is a regulatory tool that you use to implement, but a comprehensive plan is a policy guide. So there appears to be, when the leap was taken from the base to the overlay, it appears that there were some components that perhaps were not put in place.
Right.
And that's what we're trying to...
That is it.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we're kind of in a brave new world here.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We're trying to strengthen our overlay, correct?
Yes.
Right.
We're trying to keep the fabric of the overlay intact and strengthen it to be able to implement it.
And strengthen it means do we all withstand legal challenges?
Yes, sir.
So would, have we consulted with any, you know, expert land use attorneys on some of this language? Or could we, over the next 10 days? Just to kind of, I think that might be a, is that a good idea?
I do.
Sure.
Okay. Well, just to kind of vet it a little bit further before we adopt it, is that okay with you to do? Or is that something you would recommend?
Sure, absolutely. No, surely, absolutely. The more informed decision you can make, the better.
Well, and I personally hope that we can have an overlay that reduces the number of variances.
Right.
Having sat on the ZBA for a couple of years, that's not the way to get the vision to achieve the end result that we want. And again, if we can write language that, you know, as has been suggested, that doesn't either allow variances or is so clear that we really, you know, that we just, we limit that to, because it just doesn't make good sense to do each parcel case by case by case.
Well, when you take a creative visionary aspect such as this overlay and you try to write the tool to implement it, you're going to meet these kind of problems because it's creative whereas the other is regulatory. So this is just part of flushing out those things that you need to flush out to make it work.
So we've got a, you know, if we had kept operating under the way that the Cav had done it, I mean, in my opinion, just an opinion, we would have ended up with more challenges and problems because it's not, because you said, like you said, there were some components left out between the underlying zoning and the, and so what our goal is to have a clear, concise overlay that everybody understands. And that's what we, when we talked about this a month ago or however long ago to give you instructions, that's what we're trying to do, is clarify things and make sure people understood what they were getting when they came in without a lot of leeway for us, what, you know, people sneak things through. Like, you know, we've had discussions early on with some folks about false fronts, you know, building a second story that was going to be a warehouse or, you know, and so those are things that you're aware of, that I'm aware of, and that our intention is to prevent those things. So when people come, some people will comment that through email whatnot, that that's what we're going to be allowing by your text amendments. It's just, we know that that's not the intent or what we're trying to do.
We're trying to tighten the language.
Right, right. We're trying to prevent exactly that, people not doing what they're supposed to be doing. And I appreciate your efforts on that. We're going to continue with your efforts and your staff and consult with more folks and hear more public comment and more, have more people come in and talk to us about this over the next few days. So I appreciate all, again, all the hard work that you've done on this.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment about it. You know, I think that the one-inch-thick responses from the citizens certainly shows how valuable the citizens feel that the overlay is. There is a tremendous amount of support for the overlay, and certainly I think the mayor explains it very well about the intent of the text amendment, was provide clarification, no structural changes. And I believe that as a council, I think that that's been made clear to staff, and I understand it's a difficult thing to do. One of the difficulties we have is that a moratorium was placed and that we have a moratorium lifting on June 26?
June 25.
June 25. And as a two-reed ordinance body, we have a structural time constraint in being able to meet that moratorium. Where, and I guess maybe I should pose this as a question, could you just explain that process and sort of the constraints that we have, whether or not we meet that moratorium lifting deadline? Or if we don't have a resolution, that it's acceptable to the council? You know, what sort of the next step would be for the council if we were to go beyond that moratorium?
Well, if you, if you tried to lift it prior to the moratorium, you would need to have a special call hearing to be able to address that.
I think you were talking about extending the moratorium.
If you extend the moratorium, then you could do that here on the floor.
Another 10 days or something if it was...
To extend it. I would recommend that it be to a date certain.
Right.
And then with clear direction on, you know, what else it is that you would like for us to discuss, debate, reveal.
I know you want this process to be, to wrap up here. I think we can do it in the next week or so. I think that that'll be...
Right.
Yes, Marie?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to make a point to further the comment that Ms. Williams made because I really think that truly is a key indicator of success of any plan. And she mentioned when, during her tenure on the ZBA, that it's variance after variance. And that is a true indicator that when a plan of any sort or even a particular zoning category, when variances are sought repeatedly, it tells, it should tell the elected body, something must be wrong, especially if you are granting the variances, that if you're doing that multiple times, then the path should be, let's change the ordinance to accommodate ultimately what it is we want to implement. And I think the difficulty that staff had is this, it is clear that the community supports the overlay. It is clear that they've embraced the end result of what this overlay can achieve, as with the elected body. The difficulty is, we have a regulatory tool that doesn't have the mechanism in which to reach that ultimate goal and to achieve the development to a standard for which you all have understood, which you all have supported when it was all designed in DeKalb County. And that's the reach because the regulatory tool can't make that leap without certain changes so that you can avoid the variances. Because the last thing I know you all want is to impede the progress of implementing the plan. And a variance requires a ZBA hearing and a path in which to take that does slow the process. So that's what staff is looking at. That's what they've discussed with me all along. And the understanding is very clear of what the end goal is as to what to achieve. No one is here trying to change the framework of this plan, not at all. It's, we're trying to get there so we can help you implement it.
Right. And we all, I think we'll get there, and a lot of the comments that we, that you, that you were in the packet and I read were also very good comments and made me think a lot, well, we make sure we watch out for that or this. So there's, you know, there were some offline comments, but there were some good input from citizens about parking and height and other things. So, you know, I think it's, we need to continue that process, and I appreciate your work and the citizens' input, and we're going to have more of that. If we can just get the review by some land use attorney, or one or two, it'd be good.
We'll do that, and with your permission, we would like to, until you direct us otherwise, place this on the June 17th council meeting, at least at a minimum, to update you on the status of the last week of what we've been doing.
All right, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Susan for your hard work, and I think there has been some misunderstanding as to what the text amendments are doing. I think you've provided a definition of story where there wasn't one. We are, some people have said, why are you reducing the parking even more when in fact we're really tripling the parking requirement? Because the one, the one thing we have heard loud and clear is that the overlay, especially for restaurants, is probably badly underparked. And I think the residents feel it more painfully than any of us, so I think you've addressed that very well. There's been some big gaps, and you've attempted to fill them. Whether they're exactly right yet, maybe we're not quite there yet, but I think you've taken a great stab at it, and I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions for Susan? All right. Thank you very much, Susan. We appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, you might want to invite the public.
Yes, absolutely. This is public hearing, so public comments more, this is, the public hearing is open, so please, Dana, the first person is?
G. Douglas Dillard.
Doug Dillard.
That's the next one.
Oh, he's on the, oh, okay, thank you. Thank you for standing. Okay, okay. All right, so we got some more here.
While you're here, can you read through some?
Yeah, can you look over the overlay stuff for us, Doug? I kept saying it, looking at you, looking at maybe some pro bono volunteer work.
Doug is very...
We don't really want Mr. Dillard to make the decision.
We'd like his acceptance.
Hey, we need the...
Why don't you sign a waiver?
We need the angel and the devil, so find us an angel. They'll go to bed.
Actually, Mr. Dillard is building in full compliance in the overlay, and yes, it's a good thing.
It's Farmer Doug, by the way. He's Farmer.
But now he's...
Frank McCloskey.
He's still going? You said he was going.
He is? Oh, hold on, I'll take it back.
Thank you. Good evening. Kathy and Kevin did a great job earlier explaining the process, the importance of this, and even though it's not for record, you heard it, and you can't discount it. So I want to, I want to, again, compliment you because I think they set a beautiful framework for why this is important to the community. Because the visioning process and the broad base input and all those involved with this when this started seven, eight years ago, created the will of the people. So what we're talking about is the people's will. And I think we're all smart enough that we understand the difference between intent and impact. So even though the intent may have been trying to tighten up some soft spots, the impact was it really appeared that it was allowing gamesmanship through exception, that you can go to a 1.75 instead of holding the line at 2.2, I mean, at 2 minimum. And you all have had a lot of really technical input of how to tighten up and to make sure that the visioning and the overlay is held to, and that is your responsibility, that is your ethical responsibility, that is your commitment. And if I was hearing more of that from not only the planning commission, because I will tell you from my point of view, and knowing that there was a week of when the public amendment was made to the June 5th meeting, and in that public input, from my standpoint, looking at the tape, there was a lot of confusion or there really was uncertainty from the planning commission viewpoint of why all of that substantial background, we ended up on the few narrow proposals that for many had the impact of gutting the overlay. And there really wasn't, my sense, that there was understanding within the planning commission of what they were doing about there. And then to have comments, and if you could go back and look at the tape, it was really insulting to the public to be handled in the manner that they were because the feeling was the commission had their mind made up and really didn't want to hear much from the public. And I don't think that's a good way to earn trust with a community that's looking for its leadership to set the example. So the only thing I'm going to say right now is, Mayor, you mentioned legal challenge. I think we have a product that this is the kind of legal challenges. Someone wants to legal, legal challenge the overlay, fight it. Because then you're committing to... Because then you're committing to the community that you're going to fight for something that they believe in. And think long-term. Don't think short-term that we've got some projects in the pipeline, if we can go ahead and create some exceptions, we can get some rep. No. You hold true because you're sitting on the most valuable piece of property in Atlanta. Hold the line, think long-term because the developers will adapt to what you want and will have a livable pedestrian-free community. And Councilman Bates, this idea of your charter school, if we don't have this kind of livable community, at some point, that's going to impact your love and your desire for that charter school. So again, hold the line. And I'm really looking for you all to come through and behave with what I'm hearing these words say today, to tighten up and don't loosen up what the intent of the overlay is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Eddie Eler.
Eddie Eler.
I want to agree with what Kathy, Kevin, and Mr. McCloskey have said. I was a little shocked to find out that there had been any time for public input as this was developed. As during my day, I don't generally have time to check the website. It would be nice if in the overlay area, there was some sort of public notice signage to take public input, to craft these technical changes in a fashion that agree with the law and agree with the intent of the public. I would be very disappointed if something less than two stories were to be the final technically accepted method for development of that area because once it is done, it will be done for 50 years and it will be impossible to go back and revisit this. For the people who have suggested that they might want to use part of that second story for a patio, there's always the roof of the second story for that to be the place. Years of public input went into developing this. Dozens of public meetings went into developing this. Two weeks to discuss technical changes is not sufficient time to gather public input and define what the will of the public is for the best use of this property. And I would hope that this would be reviewed, rewritten, and substantial time for additional public input before any changes are made to this document. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
I just wanted to say that last fall, when you all were running, that you all agreed to enforce and uphold the Brookhaven overlay. And I wanted to remind you that that is still an important thing for the citizens of our area to make it more livable, walkable, and bikeable. So I just want to second everything that everyone else has said already.
Thank you. Next.
Linda Martin.
My perspective has been a little different as one of the few commercial property owners who was involved in the LCI original meetings. I think this vision is very powerful and a good moneymaker. And so I really thank you for the strong support I've heard today. We've, we've watched a lot of people try to game the system over the years. And I agree that having maybe some attorneys, I love the devil angel idea, to, to try to beat this up. You know, they put Joe Kennedy in charge of the SEC because he was such a crook. So maybe we need some of that. But I think having maybe, I'm not saying you are. No, I wasn't meaning that.
Chief, get your handcuffs ready over there.
Oh, God. I would like to see maybe a team get together and beat this up because I've been involved in a lot of technical discussions way over my head. But what I hear from all these bright people about who know planning is all these different considerations. So maybe we need a developer, an attorney, some citizens, some landowners, all together with poor Susan of working on this together. So that's what I would like to recommend. And I know it's a tight timeframe, but we need it to be right. Thank you.
Thank you. Where, you know, can I comment? Is it time for a second? Can I ask a question?
You may ask a question, Susan.
I can ask you a question, Susan? You wouldn't advise that we pass any ordinances on the overlay until it was right, would you not?
Correct.
So if it's not right in seven days, you're not going to advise us to pass it, correct?
Not that you're really asking me this, but I would recommend that you approve it as it is. It's recommended by the planning commission. Recommend that you approve it with changes that you see appropriate to change or recommend that you do nothing. It's your prerogative. It's what you see is best for Brookhaven. And we'll implement what you decide.
Thank you. Next.
Bill Roberts.
Bill Roberts.
I'm representing BPCA and also I live in Brookhaven Heights. And first, I wanted to echo your kind words to Susan earlier. I think it's appropriate to do that. She's been very accessible to the BPCA and I'm sure she's taken a lot of phone calls from people that are not part of the group, but she's done a good job. And not everybody was sending her negative stuff and thank you for acknowledging that too. I think a lot of people were appreciative of what her intent was.
Right.
And she did a lot of homework on that. So having said that, all of the work she's done is definitely a step in the right direction. I was also at that June 5 meeting and the planning commission, one of the comments that came up that I think kind of rolled the waters a little bit was, you know, all of, a lot of these things can be varianced and these requests can be made. And everybody said, well, you know, what's the point of defining it as 75% or 80%? And that's kind of, you know, silly if somebody could come in and just ask for, you know, the ability to variance that away, just do a one-story building. So one of the ideas we came up with, which would further tighten things up, and we talked to Bill and Susan about it, is to remove the second story as a question of whether you can variance that away or not. You know, just a two-story minimum, and that's not subject to the jurisdiction of the ZBA. So the endless deferrals and appeals and, and the citizens that get caught up in, there's a rainy Tuesday night meeting and nobody can come, and that's the one night when that project gets approved and everybody is otherwise engaged. And it's between November and December and everybody's busy. That's the kind of thing that breeds public cynicism.
Right.
Is that, you know, we come to a bunch of the meetings and there's deferrals, referrals, rules, and then the one time you don't come is when something happens. So if you could completely tighten the second story issue up, saying that there's no more debate on that, second story cannot be subject to an appeal, I think that would calm the waters a lot. I think that would be a great way to, you know, and one of the options you have tonight is to approve and recommend with, with some additional language. That may be a good outcome tonight as a compromise that would satisfy everybody because, you know, there have been eight, nine, I've got 10 years on the BPCA now, so there's been a lot of years put into this. And a lot of people feel pretty strongly about it and, but it's a great step in the right direction and Susan's done a great job, so.
Thank you.
Sure. Appreciate it.
Mark Miller.
Mark Miller.
Honorable Mayor and esteemed councilperson, staff, and public attendees. I'm here to play with regard to 3931 Peachtree Road and more general because of my involvement with the overlay for, I guess, since seven years now. There's a set of handouts that I gave the city clerk and it would be helpful if you can have it. If not, there's a packet for each of you. They all had the same thing. And anybody in the public that wants it after the meeting, I can give them a copy as well. The first thing I would, just in taking a lead off of something that Bill had said about the planning commission, I think part of the obligation, whenever you take a role, whether it's in government or private practice, is to be prepared when you sit down to fulfill that role. And the first thing that's in your packet is the guidelines for transit-oriented development. And I don't know, but if I questioned each of the members of the planning commission, have you looked at the transit-oriented guidelines? I question whether they had, okay? And I'm making a speculation based on the questions that I didn't hear at that hearing. But let me point out a few things about transit-oriented development guidelines, which underlies the development of the whole overlay. It's part of that important process along with the homeowners associations that participated, the neighbors, the DOT, all the stakeholders that participated in that process in 2007. And the whole idea, of course, was to, let's try to make the community a better community, relieve traffic, and create some density, which both improves aesthetics, improves the tax base, there's, and it's long-term. In terms of what this administration will do, I can't think of too many things that would be more important and more far-reaching than the successful execution and implementation of the overlay. The buildings that will go in in the next five to 10 years on the overlay will be there for the next 50 or more years. One of the things the TOD, the Transit-Oriented Development Guidelines talks about is that we do need more scale and more compact areas so that there is more ability to walk and get there in shorter distances. And they give specifics. One of the specifics they give is prohibitions. We really should prohibit these single-story or two-story islands that are vehicular-oriented. Now, what I hear is a conflict, a conflict between how do we handle the small pieces of land, small property owners, and how do we handle, on the other hand, the desire for density? And how do we handle, on the other hand, flexibility? Those are the three conflicts that I see going on. And quite frankly, TOD says you simply have to prohibit. You simply have to prohibit some of this. And I would say that if any building can be built on the underlying zoning, it can be more easily built under the overlay. And if you've got a 10,000-square-foot building, you might have to make it two, two stories, 5,000 on first floor and 5,000 on the second floor. But you have less restrictive side yards, you have less restrictive parking, and therefore you actually have more buildable space. So it's disingenuous when an applicant comes into the city and says, I can't build on this parcel. It's disingenuous because it is no different, it is more easier under the overlay than before. I highlighted a few things in the Transit-Oriented Development Guidelines for you to look at. The second part of that package is just a suggestion that I had in terms of what, what can we do as the specific issue at hand, which is the definition of the two stories? Now, what we've heard tonight, and it's, well, two means two, basically. In April, when I first met with Susan, later on, I submitted this in writing, I said, what else could we say that handles one of those three issues I named, which was flexibility? I spoke with Jack Hunter. I don't think Jack's here to deny it. I said, Jack, what is your take on this? And he says, well, I think that there should be flexibility. There's atriums, there might be outdoor dining, this sort of thing. So I submit to you one, one option, which is just sum the upper story square feet. And if it equals the first floor square feet, you've achieved the desire of the overlay in terms of density, at least two stories worth of density with the same importance above as you have on ground floor. That's just one idea. It may not be the right idea, but that's one idea that gives flexibility, ensures the density and square feet. The other part of the language that I mentioned in that handout in terms of specifics is I've also heard, well, what about this front facade? Let's have 100% of the second-story front facade equal to the first-floor front facade. Okay, so are we going to have a vertical plane as you drive down Peachtree of a solid two-story front? And when you look at the overlay, it doesn't say that. In fact, it asks for differences in character. In fact, it says there are step downs and notches in buildings. And so I would suggest that to step back and again, where can we have flexibility? If you, and I've suggested two things. If you end up with, well, we're going to decide that 100% means 100% on the second story, then what if you put on there as a suggested bonus for two, for two stories, 100% of that facade? Or for four stories or less? And that, again, promotes a bonus so it gives someone more architectural options if they increase the density. The other thing I would mention is parking. And I have in your packet.
Hey, Mark?
Yes?
You've had two, three-minute periods.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that's allowable or not, if we can let him do more.
Mayor, you really have a 10-minute, four and a 10-minute against on this.
Okay.
You've busted that light up already.
Well, you know, I don't know if the people are for or against what, I mean.
That's why I couldn't, I couldn't tell either, but I figured we'd gotten the 20 minutes done. But it's, it's, we're at 46 minutes. It's up to you to how far you want to extend.
I don't have a problem continuing, but I would hope that we would understand that there are people behind you and that, and also wanting to speak and it is getting late in the evening.
We need a motion to extend? I'd be comfortable with doing that.
I think that's probably the method.
10 minutes?
Probably.
Make a motion to extend 10 minutes.
I mean, more.
Any discussion?
Or do we have? Just one more?
All in favor of extending 10 minutes, signify by somebody saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. So, Mark, maybe go one more minute and we give a couple of people.
Right, let me, let me wrap up on parking. I have submitted in your packet a set of comments by a handful of brokers who I don't personally know. I just emailed them out and said, hey, what is the typical parking requirement? And they're in your packet. And we are terribly underparked. It's not just on restaurant, it's also on office, and it's also on retail. On the day that this moratorium is lifted or something within a week, I expect a neighboring property to file an application in which their parking requirement really is four and a half to five per thousand square feet. And our overlay says 3.3. And if we don't lift the minimum, someone's going to be parking on our property because they don't have to build. And so I would submit that as a part of the packet. I also show the pictures of Angeley Park as an example, and an example of what happens in downtown where the same ratio exists.
Thank you. I had a question for Susan. The parking requirement, what is the text amendment on the parking? What are we, where are we going from? Just so people can hear and I can hear.
Let me just say one thing. Thank you. I wanted to say this at the beginning, but I know every one of you have the city's best interest at heart, are working hard on it. I see it. You're working on weekends and without assistance. So thank you.
Thank you.
The overwhelming majority of comments on parking for restaurants was that it appeared that no more than 10 spaces were allowed.
Right.
And so the information we crafted was one space for each 125 square feet, including the area that you might at some point use from outside in dining area.
I'm talking about like the, just what he referenced, the, it was five, four and a half for 1,000 square foot. Is that something? What is, what is the effect of the one for 125?
It's eight per.
Eight per thousand.
Eight per thousand. So, yeah, because I've seen some input or comments that we were not addressing the parking issue or that we're.
We're increasing it.
So.
Yeah, but you're only increasing it for restaurant, right?
That was the direction.
Okay, well, I mean, isn't the impact overall when you talk residential, office, retail especially?
There are other parking requirements for different uses in the, in the code, in the ordinance. And the complaint raised from the comments received from the public related to restaurants. So that's the reason why we focused on it.
But we haven't addressed commercial, the commercial number going up on.
Retail?
Retail.
No, I was not asked to do that.
Right. What is that, do you recommend that's something we need to address?
Um, not at this time.
Why not?
I'm not aware of an issue with that.
Okay. Well, he was just raising some.
You know, you know, the biggest, the biggest issue that came out of, of any of the comments that we've heard, especially at ZBA, has been parking. Even though a lot of those comments were not appropriate for the decision that had to be made for that night according to the rules, it's a loud comment. And, you know, you know, LCI is for livable communities and walk here, walk there. That's not the case. We know it and it's going to get worse as we keep building the way we are unless we address this completely. So looking at restaurants, I'm very pleased personally that this level has got up to the level that you've taken it. I think that's a very important step. I do think we need to look at every aspect of the parking environment.
That's, that's a very large animal. I hear what you're saying. We do allow for parking decks in the overlay, so we need to probably vet that thoroughly.
But then the other question on restaurants I have for you, have you broken out classifications on that when you're talking Class A restaurants versus?
No, I did not.
Because Class As are going to require even higher levels than what is addressed in LCI the way you have proposed this right now. So.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. More public, Ronnie, you got something?
Yeah, I got a phone call.
Anybody, well, hold on. Anybody who hasn't, wait a second, wait a second. Anybody hasn't spoken yet who wants to speak on the, any of these issues? Is anybody out there? Do you have any cards from anybody who hasn't spoken yet?
I'm going to have a question. Of course.
Who's, who's that? Oh, okay. All right, so Ronnie's okay? So Ronnie's okay to go? Yeah, it's okay.
What y'all are hearing tonight is passion. You don't ever have to worry about getting an email from me or a nasty email because I don't even know how to email. My wife does. She doesn't do nasty things. I might call you on the phone, but this is passion. What you see and what you hear, and, and I'm not gonna say this as a mean way, but I am a civic leader, community leader, community activist, and I've never had a call from anybody invite me to a meeting on this. I would love to be involved. You can call my friend Jim Ira, and he knows how to reach me on my cellphone, and I would love to be involved in this thing. But I was involved with everything with the Haven Restaurant, with across the street from Haven, with, uh, Town Brookhaven. I even have the shovel that broke ground at Town Brookhaven in my living room. I've been involved in all of, since the 70s. They wouldn't even let, so when y'all were all going to college, they wouldn't let me into college. I was buying property at Brookhaven.
You have a shovel? You got a shovel?
I, I got the shovel.
Mine's missing.
So I've been a, no, this was Mr. CEO Vernon's shovel gave me.
He wouldn't give me his shovel.
I know. So I've been involved, and for a long time. And I'm very passionate about our new city. At first, I argued about it, but I love it. I love all y'all for being involved. I keep reminding you to take passion. You know, you know, I, I love you involved in the school. Eddie Ullert, that was here, has been involved in the school for 20 years, I mean, with his daughter. There's so many people that have passion from years ago. And we are very knowledgeable about the old city, how it used to be in the new city. And we would love to be, you call us anytime, we'll help you because we have a lot of, of knowledge of the old stuff, and us old goats can probably help y'all a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. We love you, too. Anything, anybody else? All right, come on up. Mr. Castor line. Does he have a card, Mr. Cashline?
She does not.
Oh. Do we need to have a card from him? We need to fill out a card after you finish. Thank you.
I would only like to speak to one thing, and that is the density. With the new apartments that you're building on Dresden-
I'm not building it.
Did you have approved that are being built? Is that right? Well, oh, okay. Anyway, the result is the same, and, and we'll be looking at this going forward. When you're building, uh, at 80 to 90 units per acre, this creates tremendous density. And it appears to me you've had an initial development of, of the retail development, and now all you're seeing are the apartment projects being proposed. Not only the ones that were approved and built on Dresden, but, uh, also now talking to the project that was at Bel Air and Peachtree, that 90 units per acre. You're talking tremendous densities and tremendous cost to the city as far as services that you're gonna have to provide, and also as far as ingestion. I'm terribly concerned that a project of that type of scale, density, will end up at Colonial and Peachtree, which is where, um, Starbucks is and, and the Kroger Center. That's the main link to our community, to Peachtree Street, talking of Brookwood Heights. And if we end up with that project, uh, north of Starbucks, that entire tract of three to four acres at 90 units per acre, it, it will make Colonial almost impassable, the majority. So I only speak to that concern, that you be mindful that density is, is a terrible cost to the city.
Thank you very much. Next, Dana? That's it? Okay, and, first of all, before we close this, anybody else have a comment they wanna make? We'll make sure the citizens are heard and they have a chance to speak, so last chance on this. All right, thank you. Now, that's finished, and now we go to the second item. Number two.
Mayor, Council, next item on public hearings is public hearing for RZ 1301. We believe that there's gonna be a request for a 30, a 60-day referral. I think we have one person to speak after, after the staff.
You can do it very quickly, right?
Quickly, yes. RZ 1301, 1475 North Druid Hills Road. Request for deferral was considered in a first read by council. This is your second read. If you grant this referral, we would recommend that you state for the record that it would go to the Planning Commission on July 3rd and to the council for a public hearing on July 23rd.
Thank you. Mr. Dillard, did you fill out a card? He did, all right. Yeah, get his bar number on there, too. Make sure he's still-
That's Georgia bar number, right? Yeah, we, we've had an opportunity to meet with the neighborhood, and we have filed amended application. As you know, the original applicant, um, withdrew, and we have supplemented them with, uh, Mr. Smith and his group. We think we've got a very aggressive plan. It's less density was proposed. It's consistent with the staff's previous recommendation. Don't know what they're gonna recommend on this particular application, but we're hopeful that, uh, as the recommendations that we have incorporated, based on our meetings with the neighborhood, which we can, which we will continue to have, uh, hopefully we can come to the Planning Commission and with, uh, and to you later in the month with a, with an agreement and support from the neighborhood. So, uh, we would ask for the deferral. I think we're, it's, uh, it's worthwhile for everyone to try to engage in the dialogue and try to work it out.
Can I ask a question on this? You'd said just a second ago that the, your plan you felt was consistent with the comments from staff on the previous plan. Is that correct?
Yes, our, our density is eight units per acre as opposed to the density that was requested before, which I think was at 10, 10.23. So-
Okay.
So we're within the RA8 designation. We think that's consistent with the uses which are adjacent and surrounding. Uh, I think the development will have a nice open space. One of the things that's been interesting is, uh, the neighborhood doesn't want connectivity, so we've, we've eliminated that. But, um, which was a, a big, a big part of the-
Through a sidewalk or a street?
Pedestrian.
They don't want pedestrian connectivity?
Pedestrian, no. Which, uh, question, but that's what they want.
What did staff recommend on that? Did they have a recommendation on-
Staff has not recommended yet. Susan, y'all be out in the next week or so, I guess.
Was there connectivity on the other one? There wasn't? Did y'all recommend connectivity on the other?
Yeah, we showed connectivity on our initial plan, uh, and, um, we took it off. But, uh, on the initial plan that we, we had the neighborhood meeting, we had over 20 people come and meet, meet with them. We had two meetings, uh, and we're looking, once we get the staff's recommendations, to go back to the neighborhood, so hopefully we'll have, we'll have support. But we have a traffic study done. We have an environmental impact statement. Um, the access to North Druid Hills is a, is an issue for us. So, uh, but, uh, other than that, I think everything else will be, will be satisfactory resolve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments on this, number two? Mr. McCloskey?
Beg to differ, Mr. Dillon. There's not satisfaction around this issue. So it makes it sound like everything is hunky-dory. But I want to tell you, there is a lot of consternation about the density. The quality of the project is being driven by what the developer can make from, sell the land and the, you know, in other words, instead of the quality of the product, driving the product, the price of what the person can get to go ahead and cover the cost of the land, which gives you a, a price point that is significantly lower than what the property value is. You're taking a high-density project and putting it right in the middle of a low-density neighborhood. Right now, even with the so-called lower density, you're still having a row of houses that back up to the subdivision Villa Crista, Cristavilla, which is totally unacceptable to that community. If you try to go ahead, instead of putting those row houses with the back of those townhomes facing that project and move in parallel to North Druid Hills, the developer won't do that because it messes with his price points and density. So I will tell you right now, that is a critically important area to Brookhaven. And I'm not saying it needs to be four homes as the current zoning is. It doesn't need to be 30, 'cause that's not, whatever's been recommended is not an improvement over what the original developer said. So somewhere farther down the line, less homes, higher price points, and I think you might have something that begins to be a conversation with the community. But the community's gonna get organized around this.
Were you opposed to the connectivity?
I'm opposed to, I didn't, I don't even want to talk about connectivity until we get the density in the right place.
If they got the density in the right place, would you be opposed to connectivity?
Yes.
You would?
Yes. And back to what I thought I heard Bruce say, the traffic patterns, what's happening on North Druid Hills already, and by putting that kind of density, and what's gonna happen to add to that danger? And what you're gonna have as far as overflow in the Hillsdale, and, and especially in the, in Brookhaven Heights, is, Mayor, affecting the viability of the residential community, which is the lifeblood of our city. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes? You wanna come up to the podium?
I would, yes.
Okay. Did you fill out your form?
I did.
Okay.
So I'll know what you'd like. I did attend the two meetings with the developer after he had his plans. It was my impression that the, the neighborhood in general was supportive of it. He has hired a good attorney. He's hired a very good architect to develop the project, the same architect, for example, that did the housing there on Dresden adjacent to, uh, the commercial development. That has been award-winning. The neighborhood was concerned more about the density when it was higher at 10 units per acre. Reducing to eight gives the, the feel of the overall site a lot more open space. The setbacks for the project, uh, townhomes, are almost twice what the required setbacks are. It was my feeling after we had, especially the second meeting, where they had a more detailed plan, that the neighborhood was, uh, pretty much in, in agreement with the project. At eight units per acre, it does meet the master plan requirements as far as density. There are projects, excuse me, the, the neighborhood immediately adjacent on either side are single-family homes, but there is a townhouse development immediately north of those single-family homes, and there is also another townhouse development immediately west of the single-family homes. Both of those projects are higher density than what is being proposed here. The, um, community board that reviewed the project, myself being a part of that board, felt it was a good project.
Thank you. Can we do that? Can we, he come back up? He cannot? Um, we can't have rebuttals. I'm sorry. Can't.
Not true.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. We're gonna close the public hearing on this, uh, second one. Okay, new business. We're almost done. It's getting hot in here, isn't it? We need a vote on that?
We need to close the public.
I've closed the public hearing. I already did. All right. So we're gonna vote on one and two? Or no?
Under new business, um, you'll address it there as the action items.
Okay, so we're going to new business. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Number one?
Yes, Mayor, the, uh, new business ordinance 2013-06-07. This is first read on the amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding Brookhaven Peachtree overlay. I believe at this point in time, Mayor, that you all are gonna set that to the June 17th calendar. Is that correct?
Correct.
A motion for that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move that we defer the ordinance 2013-06-07, text amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding the Brookhaven Peachtree overlay. Defer to-
You don't need to, you don't need to have to defer it. We just need to set it to that date because this is a first read. We're just notifying that the second, the next second read will be on the 17th.
Okay. So, uh, is, is, is no discussion? No vote on that?
No, you don't need to have a vote on this. It's simply a first read. This is, we're still the two-read process.
Are there any conditions that can or should be attached to this?
Well, I think what you have now, council members, you've given direction to staff during the public hearing process and ask questions, and through your comments, that they'll go to development, uh, on bringing, bringing back some work, bringing out, back some different language that will get to the second read. And if it's approved at that point in time, then you can pass it out on that date. I think you've also given direction that if we don't get to that point, that you, you have, you understand there are other options that you may take, including go, bring, going forward and, uh, give us maybe another 10 days under the moratorium. But we'll, we'll pass that when we get to it.
All right.
Thank you.
And the second one, uh, number two?
That's the ordinance, uh, 2013-06-10. That was, uh, RZ 1301. I believe there's been a request for another deferral in that matter, and I believe that the Community Development Director would like, if that is your will, that including the deferral that's, that you, that you actually send it, send back the case with the amended, okay, where are we at? That this is a new application, or just, if you'll just, just send this back?
A motion to send it back?
No. Hold on, I just need to get what you want me to do, Susan.
Recommend that you grant the deferral, and send this to the planning commission, the new application to the planning commission on July third, and to the city council on July twenty-third.
Is there a motion for that?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we defer, or grant the deferral to the July third planning commission, then to be heard by the July twenty-third city council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, may I just, for a point of clarification, please, on the motion?
Define.
Yes, sir. There are two points here. The first was to defer the case as requested, and then, second, the new case being sent to the planning commission for July third hearing, and then back to you all July twenty-third. So there's, there's two points. The old case, which is before you this evening, requesting the deferral, which the planning commission recommends.
To, to the same dates.
This, this case will die. It's, they're requesting a deferral, that it's, it's no longer the same case as what was originally submitted, and so the revised case is now traveling.
I'd like to amend my.
We have those dates in there.
Just clarifying, that's just a point of clarification.
I would like to amend my motion as clarified by Marie.
Is there a second?
I'll keep my second.
Second, all right. Any discussion? All in favor of deferring and approving the motion as submitted by Mr. Madison signifies it by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. All right, number three?
Number three, we'd ask that you simply, we want this one simply removed.
Reset to July twenty-third?
Reset to July twenty-third, is that correct?
July twenty-third.
Sign?
Yeah.
Seventeen? We'd like to, do you direct this to the planning commission for July third?
July third?
And July third for the planning commission, the twenty-third back to the city council.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes, I move ordinance two zero one three zero six zero eight, a motion to send to the planning commission with seven three review and coordinate it with the council meeting on seven twenty-three.
Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right. I don't have a third page. I don't have that last page.
Mayor, the last item is ordinance two thousand thirteen oh six oh nine, an ordinance to amend chapter four alcoholic beverages with the code of the city of Brookhaven by amending section four point one, section four point four-nine, section four point five-oh, section four point five-one, section four, excuse me, it's four dash on all of those, four dash one oh one point one, a section four dash one oh four, and by deleting section four dash one oh two C, to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for an adoption in effective date, provide for codification, and to provide for other lawful purposes, this is a first read. No actions required.
All right, thank you. Other business?
I thought we were going to make a slight amendment on this.
I believe you will have some amendments by the time you get here on the second read on it.
Okay.
All right, any other business?
Can we point out that this is nothing to do with.
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to point out, just so people understand this, we're just identifying them as subsections, it has nothing to do with pouring hours. Okay? This is just to clarify where there are conflicting ordinances, has nothing to do with anything really serious.
All right, thank you, Joe, for pointing that out.
You're welcome.
Any other business? Do we do public comments again? We got anybody? Oh, third time, public comments.
Terry Fox?
Terry Fox.
I will make this free.
I've got to go to the restrooms.
Yeah. But I'm the general manager of the Mike Hotel and Suites at Cabby Island, Brooklyn Boulevard. Now, my purpose today is to ask you guys, the mayor and the city council, to review the proposal that was given to the city by the DeKalb Convention and Business Bureau, and consider allowing them to continue to represent us, represent the hotels in Brookhaven. There's nine today, soon to be ten, and there is a sense of urgency regarding the proposal because the DeKalb Convention and Business Bureau is dropping those of us in Brookhaven on August the first, since they no longer receive our tax revenue. So what this means to me is that there's a real danger of me losing a lot of business in revenue. And frankly, for the past several years, you guys probably know the lodging industry, we've suffered. And so this is the first real recovery year that I personally have felt, and my colleagues who were here earlier but had to leave felt as well. And they were here from the Hilton Garden Inn on Lake Hur Drive. But that's all I had to say, and I would really appreciate it if you guys would consider it, and it would be super beneficial for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments?
Edward A. O'Brien?
Chief O'Brien.
Good evening, I'll try to make it brief also. Well, thank you for letting me come tonight. I'm Edward O'Brien, the fire chief here at DeKalb County, and I'm also working directly for you and the citizens here in Brookhaven, since we do service this area. Two items I'd just like to bring up. One of them, of course, is the North DeKalb Fire Authority, that is a big item here lately. Right now, the DeKalb Fire Rescue's never been approached about this concept. What I like to do is make sure we open the door up. If you have questions, love to sit down with you, love to get my staff together with you, educate you on, you know, what it takes to have a fire rescue department, personnel-wise, equipment, everything like that, budget-wise. So I will make my staff and myself available to assist with this. Second one is, has to do with my Fire Marshal's Division. I know I have been having some issues. Recently, I did have to, had to let a plan reviewer go for misconduct. It was a tough decision, but it was a right one, so that we can move forward. I do have some good news, though. I do have a temporary staff person coming on on the twenty-fourth that'll assist greatly. It was actually an ex-employee of ours who retired. It's a good thing when they left, but they are coming back onboard on the twenty-fourth. And also today, I have received approval from our purchasing department to allow a temporary contract with a large engineering firm here that actually has done business, I think, with Brookhaven and Dunwoody. We hope to have them onboard for next week. So just in a recap, you know, let's, I hope we can have some good communication on both items, with Fire Marshal's Office, with Plan Reviewing, and with the North DeKalb Fire Authority. And I do want to just make sure you understand, we do appreciate the support, Station Two right here in Brookhaven, but it also takes more than just Station Two to service this city. And also like, my friend Ronnie Mayer, I've known for years, and the support that everyone has given Station Two. I think it's a special place. If you've ever been there, you'll understand, the personnel are great, and we love this city. Thank you.
Ronnie Mayer?
Ronnie Mayer. Who? He has definitely used up his.
I feel cards out. Ronnie Mayer, community activist again. You know, you hear rumors that y'all want to swap the garbage service. I have two issues tonight, the garbage service, and I think y'all have already shot it down, but I'm going to still just remind you anyway. I was told that, you know, somebody said that, oh, if we go with a private garbage service, we'll save maybe forty dollars per family, fifty dollars per family, and, you know, and fifty bucks, I mean, to some families, that's a lot. The scary thing is, is the rest of the stuff, whether, you know, they give franchise fees, and we can do that. DeKalb's kind of station has a mowing and a herbicide division, okay? That includes, can help us do some of the grass on Peachtree, but we're going to need some help from y'all contacting them when we start doing this agreement with the county. And at the same time, even though you're saving forty bucks, if we have a tornado come through here like it came through Dunwoody years ago, that forty bucks is going to get heated up right quick, and hauling off trash and limbs and trees and stuff, and I think if it's not broke, don't mess with it. That's enough with sanitation. I hear rumors that the mayors of either Dunwoody or Sandy Springs, you know, really Sandy Springs already has a brand-new fire department. They had a big fire a couple weeks ago down off Lennox Road, and the news said, oh, greatest thing, we got fire engines coming down here from Fulton County. There was one fire engine, and because there's a one-engine company on Roswell Road in Waiauca that has a Fulton County engine and a Sandy Springs engine in there, and that's the only reason there was a Fulton County engine at that fire. When you talk about if we created just a Brookhaven fire station, there's no way that Brookhaven can, can have enough fire stations to put out a large fire. Sandy Springs ain't going to send you but one fire truck, maybe two, and if you shoot DeKalb County an arm, they're not going to send you twelve fire trucks. About two years ago, we had a big fire on the railroad, and I don't know if y'all even remember it, they were grinding the railroad tracks, and from the Brookhaven mortar station all the way almost to the Shandley Line, all the grass was on fire. The backyards were on fire, it was dry. We had fire trucks coming here from I twenty and Pinola Road. You create a little fire thing, like I said, the fire department's here, it's not broke, we're getting great service. If we have problems with dispatching, we can work on that. But our DeKalb Fire Department Rescue is the best there is. I suggest all y'all, come down one evening, sit down with each of the fire shifts, A, B, and C, come talk to the fire captains, the engineers, and, and really sit down with them, and you'll really realize how good of a big fire department we have here. And whoever's got this idea of creating a new fire district, let me tell you, it ain't broke, and if you want to break this city, try to create a new fire department.
Thank you, Ronnie.
And then you'll have, but like I say, these other guys are not going to bring, you know, the other fire departments aren't going to send the world down here to save us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any more public comments?
Bruce?
Oh, you forgot.
Half a minute, half second.
No, no, can't, got it. It's getting late. We got, we got nobody who wants public comment, you address this afterwards. Who's next? Oh, we're done? Oh.
Any council comment?
Any count, oh, I got it. The public comment section is closed. Mayor's comments. Want to say I heard Ronnie talking about rumors of this, rumors of that. Instead of base anything on rumors, just give us a call, Ronnie. Give me a call anytime if you hear any rumors. And by the way, again, Mondays with the mayor, any folks want to come talk about the overlay amendments or anything, Monday, I'll be at the office. Anybody that wants to come by and talk to me about it, we'll be there, and we'll bring some staff in maybe as well, so. Is that legal?
Yes.
Okay. And please do utilize, people have been utilizing it, and I appreciate the folks coming. So all you have to do is call Susan Hyatt, we'll give you thirty minutes or so, according to the time constriction of everybody else that wants to meet, and they usually start about two-thirty and go to five-thirty. The other night, we went to six or seven, anyway. Okay. All right, anybody else have any comments?
Just a, just a quick comment that I would like to convey, the fact that, you know, hopefully the citizens have seen that, that the actions we've taken up here tonight in deferring some of these key issues are a direct response to the citizens of Brookhaven and the number of people we had here and the public comments we've gotten. So, you know, there's been a lot of outreach to elected officials about how important these issues are to you. Believe me, your message is getting heard, and I, I can't reiterate strongly enough how, how important we as elected officials feel that responsibility is. So, you know, thanks for the comments and.
I agree with that, too, that we do hear, you know, people's comments, but, you know, we're not going to charge a hit on something that we're not comfortable with either, so we appreciate the public comments and the, you know, the input we're getting, but we have common sense as well, and we, you know, kind of realized, we need more time with something, we need, we're going to take more time with it. So just don't expect us, we're only going to take time with things unless you have a big outcry about it. We, you know, we're trying to be careful with everything that we do, for certain. Anybody else have anything?
I have two quick comments. I made a comment early in the evening that some of the things that we've been getting back, specifically about LCI, were lack of information, and I will tell you, in the work session tonight, I had a quick comment with our legal advisor, as well as independently with some of the council members, that an idea that what we do at a work session is we do invite in specific people from the community to help us sit down and hash over this and get the legal, to get the language down, because it seems to be the biggest problem in that is how we do structure the proper language. And that was exactly the way, I think I almost heard it said from one of the people this evening. Secondly, just to give the update to you on what is going on with sanitation, DeKalb County did announce that they were not going to be increasing anything this year, with the right to be able to consider it again next year. The bids did come in, three out of the four bids were evaluated. Right now, it looks like the savings to the citizens of the city of Brookhaven will be in excess of two million dollars. We're looking at potential.
It could be if we.
Could be, yeah, in the two million dollar range. We're looking at potential participation fees to the city in the two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range, and that doesn't even get involved in what will be a contribution to neighborhoods for recycling, which are going to be fed back for whatever special project they want to use it for, whether it be fixing sidewalks, parks, ground, playgrounds, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we haven't made a decision. We're doing our due diligence to make sure that we are trying to save as much money as we can for the city residents, and we're going to be looking at this.
I'm going to, I got one more comment, too, not about that, but about something, comments made earlier about the planning commission. I wanted to clarify with Susan. Susan, were you at the planning commission meeting? Did, just want to make sure, did the planning commission cut off the public hearing prematurely or not hear public comments, or there was some language tonight that they seemed like they didn't care, or?
No, the planning commission actually extended the timeframe to allow more comment, and I think that I actually saw some emails that came back and forth with concern over that comment that was expressed by some planning commission members. So they did extend the timeframe to allow more comment.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I appreciate that one, your battery died, babe, and I don't have an agenda. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second? Discussion, let's hear some discussion on adjournment. All in favor of adjournment? All in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye? Aye, all opposed? All right.
Ronnie, Ronnie's.